Good afternoon and welcome to the public hearing presentations for amendments 51 and 52. My name is Ally Iberly and I'm joined with my colleague Roger Polier, so we'll be reviewing these amendments with you this evening. I did want to mention that there will be an additional opportunity to provide public comment in person for these two amendments Wednesday, September 14th at the September Council Meeting. That will take place at the Town and Country Inn and Suites on Savannah Highway in Charleston. So before we jump into reviewing these two amendments, I wanted to take a second to review how we're going to move through this presentation tonight. We really appreciate you being here. The public comment is very important to the council process. And the council really relies on public input to make decisions for the fishery. So first, I will review amendment 51 for Snowy grouper all the way through. I'll hand it over to my colleague Roger, and he will review amendment 52 for golden and blue line tilefish all the way through. And then finally, we'll review how to work the webinar. We want to make sure you've you've joined us tonight to make a public comment. We want to make sure you're able to do that. Then we'll review any clarifying questions. We want to make sure we get those out of the way before you make your comments. And then finally, we'll pause to take public comment. A little bit about the council, if you're joining us for the first time. The South Atlantic Fishery Management Council is headquartered in Charleston, South Carolina, and we are one of eight regional fishery management councils. The council's jurisdiction is the Exclusive Economic Zone, or EEZ, that ranges from 300 to 200 miles offshore and spans the North Carolina-Virginia border down through the Florida Keys. The council includes 17 members, 13 voting and four non-voting, and includes recreational, commercial fishermen, state marine agency reps, and federal partners. And those 17 members represent people from each state within the region. The council provides recommendations to no fisheries who ultimately implement regulations. Without further ado, let's go ahead and jump into amendment 51 for Snowy grouper. The South Atlantic stock of Snowy grouper was most recently assessed in 2020 through SEDAR 36 update. This assessment indicated that this stock remains overfished and is experiencing overfishing, and I'll go into a little bit more of what defines those terms in just a minute. Because of the result of the assessment, a roughly 43% decrease in harvest is needed to achieve the updated catch levels that came out of that assessment. So how is overfished and overfishing determined? Overfished status deals with the size of the stock. So a stock is overfished if the stock biomass is below the minimum stock size threshold, or MSST. Overfishing refers to the actual rate of fishing. So a stock is experiencing overfishing if the rate of fishing is above the maximum fishing mortality threshold, or MFMT. So in general, what changes are proposed in amendment 51? This amendment will adjust the total annual catch limit, or ACL, and annual optimum yield, or OY. It will revise sector allocations and sector annual catch limits. It will modify the recreational season and modify recreational accountability measures. A quick note about this fishery, because of the difference in landings and the amount of landings between the commercial and the recreational sector, they're monitored in different units. So the commercial sector is monitored in pounds gutted weight. However, the recreational sector is monitored in numbers of fish. You're going to see both units throughout this amendment, and I'll try to make sure that it's super clear which units we're looking at. So what is the timeline for amendment 51? The council will continue to make any modifications and finalize this amendment through the remainder of 2022. We can expect to see changes in management around mid-2023. Alright, so I'm going to review the actions in amendment 51. Currently, this amendment has four actions, and we'll go ahead and start at the top. So action one will revise the overfishing limit, acceptable biological catch, annual catch limit, and annual optimum yield for Snowy grouper to reflect the new overfishing limit and updated acceptable biological catch recommendations. So that was a little bit of a mouthful, but think back to that updated assessment. The Science and Statistical Committee, or SSC, reviewed this assessment and deemed it best scientific information available. From that assessment, we got a acceptable biological catch, or ABC, and a new overfishing limit, or OFL. So we need to update the total annual catch limit based on these new ABC and OFL. The other thing this action will do is it will incorporate the recreational landing estimates from the Marine Information or Marine Recreational Information Program, or MRIP's Fishing Efforts Survey. So in 2018, MRIP updated the way that they estimate recreational landings from the coastal household telephone survey to the new FES method, since no one really has landlines anymore. So essentially, action one will update that total annual catch limit based on these two things. This table shows the range of alternatives for action one. Alternative one, no action, would set the ACL and OY equal to the current ABC. It would also incorporate recreational landings estimates from that old coastal household telephone survey method. Because of these things, this is not a viable alternative, as it's not based on best available science. The council has selected alternative two as their preferred. This alternative would set the ACL and OY equal to the updated ABC. Alternative three would set the ACL and OY equal to 95% of the updated ABC, so it would include a 5% buffer. And alternative four would set the ACL and OY equal to 90% of the ABC, so a slightly larger buffer at 10%. Here is the coordinating catch levels for each one of these alternatives. Again, alternative one is no longer or is not a viable alternative. Referenced alternative two starts with an ACL at 119,654 pounds gutted weight, stepping up to just under 123,000 pounds in 2026. As a note, the 2026 values in this table will remain in place until modified. Alternative three starts at 113,956 pounds gutted weight, stepping up to just under 117,000. And finally, alternative four starts at 107,954 pounds, stepping up to right under 111,000 pounds. I mentioned at the top of the presentation that there will be an approximately 43% reduction in harvest for Snowy grouper, and this graph helps to illustrate that. The orange dashed line represents the average total Snowy grouper landings from 2015 to 2019. The blue bars represent the total ACL and OY under preferred alternative two for this action. The difference between those average 2015 to 2019 landings and the updated ACLs under the preferred alternative is roughly 60,000 pounds gutted weight. Action two will revise sector allocations and sector annual catch limits for Snowy. So why do we need to reallocate? I like to think of this in terms of pizza. So your total ACL is your pizza, and in action one, we formulated a whole new pizza. It's got the best, most fresh ingredients that incorporate those updated recreational landings and ABC. So we have this brand-new pie, but it's not cut yet. So action two essentially will divvy up this pizza between both the recreational and commercial sector. This table shows the range of alternatives for action two. Alternative one, no action, will retain the current percentage allocation between sectors. So essentially, you're going to be cutting that pie exactly like you cut your old pie. You'll give 83% to the commercial sector and 17% to the recreational sector. However, these percentages were calculated using that outdated recreational landings estimate stream, so based on that coastal household telephone survey. It was determined using average landings from 1986 to 2005. The council selected alternative two as their preferred. This method would use that same formula, so average landings from 1986 to 2005, but it would recalculate, plugging in the new updated recreational landing estimates. So when you run those numbers, you end up with an 87.55% commercial allocation and a 12.45% recreational allocation. Alternative three would allocate using the comprehensive ACL formula. This formula was developed for unassessed stocks, but it has been used for some assessed stocks. When you calculate out, it results in a 73.36% commercial allocation and a 26.64 recreational allocation. These tables show the corresponding sector ACLs under each alternative for action two. On the left are the commercial ACLs in pounds gutted weight. Currently, Snowy has a split commercial season, with season one receiving 70% of the total commercial ACL and season two receiving 30% of the commercial ACL. And on the right, we have the recreational sector ACLs, and these are expressed in numbers of fish. As a note, all 2026 values will remain in place until modified. Just like we did for the total ACL, we'll look at the difference between average sector landings compared to the sector ACL under preferred alternative two. On the left-hand side, the orange dashed line represents the average commercial landings from 2015 to 2019. The blue bars represent the updated sector ACL under preferred alternative two. The difference between the two is roughly 32,000 pounds gutted weight. On the right, the recreational landings from the average recreational landings from 2015 to 2019 are represented by that orange dashed line, and then the sector, the recreational sector ACLs are the blue bars. These are roughly 3,300 fish below those average recreational landings. Action three will modify the Snowy grouper recreational season. The council is considering modifications to the rec season to help constrain recreational landings to the reduced catch levels. The table shows the range of alternatives for this action. Alternative one, no action, would retain the current recreational season from May 1 to August 31. Preferred alternative two, the recreational season would start May 1 and end on June 30th. And then alternative three would start on July 1st and end on August 30th. The alternatives for this action were analyzed based on the preferred allocation alternative of 87.55 commercial and 12.45 recreational, using two timeframes, recent three years of landings and recent five years of landings. Alternative one showed that the ACL would be met approximately mid-July based on the three years of landings, and then based on five-year landings, the ACL would be met approximately mid-June. For preferred alternative two, the ACL was not expected to be met before the end of the season based on three years of landings. However, based on five years of landings, it was expected to be met approximately mid-June. And then finally, alternative three, the ACL was projected to be met at the end of August, but before the end of the season based on the three-year, three years of landings, and then the ACL was not expected to be met before the end of the season based on the five years of landings. I will note, and we'll talk about accountability measures in just a minute, that the current recreational accountability measure states that if the ACL, the recreational ACL is met or projected to be met, the current season would close. Action four will modify the Snowy grouper recreational accountability measures. The council is considering modifying the recreational accountability measures to separate the commercial and recreational postseason triggers and try to establish a more effective recreational accountability measure. So this table shows you the suite of alternatives for action four. AMs can be kind of complicated, so I'm going to walk through the status quo to help us understand how these AMs function or accountability measures function. So accountability measures are put in place to help prevent the ACL from being exceeded and then correct for any overages if they happen. So I like to think of accountability measures in two chunks. The in-season accountability measure, which happens, which occurs in the current fishing season if the record or if the ACL is exceeded, and then the postseason AM. So if you do have that ACL being exceeded, this helps correct for that overage in the following season. So looking at alternative one, no action, this is the current accountability measure. So we're looking at that top row all the way across. The first two columns represent the in-season accountability measure, or AM, and then the second two columns represent the postseason AM. So the in-season, if the recreational landings reach or projected to reach the recreational ACL, then the current recreational fishing year, that season closes. And then coming over to the postseason, if the recreational landings exceed that recreational ACL, the total ACL is exceeded, so thinking back to that pizza, so you've completely eaten your entire total pie, not just your recreational portion. And the stock is overfished, all three of these have to happen. Then the recreational ACL for the following year is reduced by the recreational overage. Alternative two, National Marine Fisheries Service would annually announce the recreational fishing season start and end dates. Preferred or alternative three and alternative four are kind of a mashup of alternative one, altering the AM to make it a little bit more functional. So I'm going to start with preferred alternative three. Alternative three removes that in-season closure, so I'm going to use alternative one to show you how it's altered. So you remove that current in-season accountability measure, so the recreational season wouldn't close if the recreational ACL is exceeded. And then you would uncouple, which is how we've been terming it, the postseason accountability measure. So the recreational ACL would be reduced by the overage in the following year only if the recreational landings exceed the rec ACL. So it's no longer dependent on the total ACL or the stock status. Alternative four retains that in-season closure, but still uncouples that postseason AM. So it's no longer determined by if the total ACL is exceeded or the stock was overfished. The only thing you would need to have that postseason AM occur would be the recreational landings exceeding the recreational ACL. That concludes the overview of amendment 51 for Snowy grouper. At this point, I'll hand it over to my colleague Roger, and he will review amendment 52.
Good evening. I'm Roger Polier, habitat and ecosystem scientist with the South Atlantic Fishery Management Council, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about amendment 52 for golden and blue line tilefish. The South Atlantic stock of golden tilefish was assessed in 2020 through SEDAR 66. The stock was found to be neither overfished nor experiencing overfishing. Actions included in this amendment are proposing revising the total annual catch limit, sector allocations, recreational accountability measures, and management measures for the commercial sector. After reviewing actions and alternatives, as mentioned earlier on, there will be an opportunity for public comment. Actions on blue line tilefish are also being considered under this amendment. The council is considering lowering the recreational bag limit, modifying the recreational season, and adjusting recreational accountability measures to prevent overages. And this is to prevent exceeding the ACLs, which over the last number of years, primarily in the recreational sector, have been exceeded. The amendment 52 is being developed through the remainder of 2022, and it's anticipated that changes in management would be expected and implemented through mid-2023. Action one of the amendment proposed to revise the total annual catch limit and annual optimum yield for golden tilefish to reflect the updated acceptable biological catch level. And the table below shows you the alternatives for no action, which is the current ABC based on the historic stock assessment, to the preferred alternative where ACL is set to ABC, which at this time is 435,000 pounds. The other alternatives are step downs from the updated ABC of 5 and 10%. The second action, action two pertaining to golden tilefish, is to revise sector allocations and sector annual catch limits for golden tilefish. And this is being done to base allocation on the revised total allowable catch limit, then incorporates the recreational landing estimates from the new Marine Recreational Information Program's Fishing Efforts Survey. Now this brings us to the alternatives for action two. Alternative one is no action, and the present allocation is 97% commercial and 3% recreational. And that's based on the mean landings 86 through 2008 that was used in the CHDS recreational landings, the historic system. If you go and move in and apply the same allocation formula to the FES recreational landings, you come up with a 96.7% commercial and 3.3 recreational. The council also determined that they were not going to change the commercial sector allocations internally, which are 25% for the hook-and-line sector and 75% for the longline sector. Right, a little more detail on action two, the revised sector allocations for commercial and recreational. Tables are shown, the alternative one, no action, as the 97 and 3% recreational allocation. Preferred alternative, based on the updated recreational fisheries information, is 96.7% and 3.3% recreational, which translates to, while slightly lower than if it had been at 97, at 420,645 pound gutted weight to the commercial sector, and an increase for the recreational sector to 2,559 fish. For action two, looking at the analysis for the commercial sector golden tilefish, if you look at the comparison between the hook-and-line and longline ACLs and the average landings, there will be an increase of the commercial longline by 32,562 relative to the average and a increase of 12,877 pounds gutted weight for the commercial hook-and-line sector. When looking at a comparison between the recreational sector alternatives, the alternative no action versus the preferred alternative and the preferred alternative two, in 2023, you're going to have an increase of 233 fish, moving up to 2,559 fish. This brings us to action three, and this is pertaining again to golden filefish, and this would be to modify the fishing year for the commercial golden tilefish fishery. And what you have are alternatives being considered, that one would be no action, and that really would, right now, there is no specific year. It starts January 1 for both hook-and-line and longline components. And alternative one, two would provide the opportunity to look at multiple alternatives for the hook-and-line fishing year, and then alternative three with specifically to the longline start of the fishing year. And the council has selected preferred sub-alternative 3A, which modifies the longline fishing year to start January 15th, and this was in response to requests from industry and addressing a number of concerns from market, weather, and other. The last golden tilefish action is action four, and it's to modify the recreational accountability measures for golden tilefish. And why is this being done? This is being considered to prevent the recreational landings from exceeding the ACL and correcting for overages if they occur. Looking at the specific alternatives, alternative one is tied to a trigger that would require that the recreation ACL be exceeded, the species is overfished, and the allowable catch limit is exceeded in the same year. All those triggers must be met in order to be able to address the measure, which would in the following year be able to reduce the length of the recreational season or adjust based on the amount of overage. Alternative two reduces that trigger down to just that the recreational landings would be exceeded in that year in the same actions relative to adjusting ACL and length of season would be available. The preferred alternative by the council, alternative three, proposes that NIMSS will annually announce the length of the recreational fishing season based on the catch rates from the previous season, and the fishing season would start January 1 and end on the date NIMSS projects that the recreational annual catch limit be met. Now this brings us into the part of the amendment that addresses blue line tilefish. Action five is proposing modifying blue line tilefish recreational bag limit. And why is this being considered? It's being considered to lower the chances of the sector exceeding the ACL. And as it turns out, in the last six years, landings of blue line tilefish in the South Atlantic region have often exceeded the sector and total allowable catch limit. Move us into action five's alternatives. These alternatives include no action. Presently, there's a three-per-person-per-day limit. Captain and crew or for higher vessels are presently allowed to retain bag limit quantities of blue line as well as other snapper grouper species. The preferred alternative two is one of two preferred alternatives the council has selected. This would be reducing the bag limit, blue line tilefish bag limit to two fish per person per day. And preferred alternative four would not allow the retention of blue line tilefish by captain and crew. Looking at some of the detailed information pertaining to bag limit for blue line tilefish, the two figures shown compare blue line tilefish harvest per person per day in percentage trips, and it's comparing captain and crew, where they contributed to the harvest and where they were excluded from the harvest. And if you look at this, it does provide a different composition for the components of the sectors when you exclude captain and crew. And if you look further into some of the bag limit information, adjusted percent reductions of southern blue line tilefish recreational landings, you see that for alternative one, the three fish per person per day essentially have no reduction. Alternative two, two fish per person per day, you have an 8.5% reduction. Alternative three, which was the one fish per person per day, have a 35.1% reduction. And the alternative four, no retention for captain and crew, would result in a 3.7% reduction. That moves us to action six, which is to modify the blue line tilefish recreational season. And why is this being considered? Again, this is really to address the issue of reducing the recreational harvest and preventing overages of the allowable catch limit. Looking at the alternatives for action six, the following table shows the no action alternative. Present recreational season is May 1 through August 31st. Alternative two would modify it from May 1 to end earlier at July 30th. Alternative three would go from June 1st through August 31st. The preferred alternative of the council is to modify the blue line tilefish recreational season to go from May 1 through June 30th. And there is an alternative five to modify the blue line tilefish recreational season July 1 through August 31st. When looking at recreational landings for blue line tilefish, the following table presents the catch by waves, and as you can see in the green shaded area, that's the present fishery. Occurs primarily May-June wave and July-August wave. The last action in amendment 52 is action seven, and that would be to modify the recreational accountability measures for blue line tilefish. And this is being proposed to prevent recreational landings from exceeding the ACL and to correct for overages if they occur. Now moving to look at the alternatives for action seven. Alternative one is no action, and presently you have the recreational ACL has to be exceeded, the blue line tilefish has to be identified as overfished, and the combined commercial and recreational allowable catch limits must be exceeded in the same calendar year. All those triggers must be met in order to be able to, in the following fishing year, reduce the length of the recreational season or address an ACL overage. Alternative two reduces that trigger down to one, which is only the recreational landings need be exceeded. And then you would still be able to follow up in the fishing year to reduce the length of the season or address the ACL overage. The preferred alternative, the council alternative three, has National Marine Fisheries Service will annually announce the length of the recreational fishing season based on the catch rates from the previous season. The fishing season will start on May 1 and end on the date National Marine Fisheries Service projects the recreational annual catch limit will be met.
That concludes our review of amendment 51 and That concludes our review of Amendment fifty-one and fifty-two. We're going to switch gears really quickly, go over how to work the webinar, answer any clarifying questions, and finally, take public comment.